Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. In this celebratory move, the feeling that we have, which is so pleasant, they haven't said of this Vader City Council meeting. I was almost inspired to invite all to participate in a Happy Birthday song in celebration of Andy Wilson's day of happy birthday, but I say we go for it. Mayor Downbeat?
Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday to you. Happy Birthday, dear Andy. Happy Birthday to you. [applause]
Thank you. We informed Andy earlier that he simply must live, at least to next year, but at number 90, and he may become one of the oldest city council members in the office. Eight years out of that, and that will be an honor for the city of Vegas. Thank you for your service to the city of Vegas. On that happy note, we'll officially call this meeting to order at 6:32 PM. And of course, I would like to take that call to order with a roll call, which is customarily done by our city clerk. It's been a time over the past.
Andy Wilson.
Present.
Mark Bennettson.
Present.
Joe Schei.
Present.
Kevin Flynn.
Present.
And Justin Olson.
Present.
And Mayor Smith.
Present.
All present.
We have a full forum. We'll proceed with our pledge of allegiance with the Battle of the Pride. And Mr. Pennison, please.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll meet back into our very loaded agenda with Mayor's report. The first thing I would note in the Mayor's report is that as two council members will undoubtedly know, that there has been a slight adjustment in the order of things. And that may represent the first of two or three tweakages that you will see because we've been reading the Association of Washington City's guidelines for standard public city council meetings. And we've been operating on tradition so long that we've become somewhat tradition-bound. And you will note that one of those recommendations on the AWC level is that the agenda approval be done near the beginning of the meeting, not after certain items have been conducted. So that's the first of changes that you'll see in the future. And if council has some concerns or observations about that, feel free to contact me at any time with your input feedback. So with that, we tend to begin with the Mayor's report, which there were two items. It didn't make the printed copy, but one of which I would begin with is the brief confirmation of the May Day preparations, which I know you're all well aware of, has been saved, again, by a group of individuals who are concerned about that ongoing tradition. In response to that, the council should know that we're directing the activities of our Public Works employees to ensure that the parade route is as safe and pottle-free as we can make it. And so, as you were worried about that, that we are sensitive to that particular need to ensure that's event is handled safely and well. So then, the other item was that I had a couple of telephonic interactions with an individual named Dan Leahy. He pleaded with me to bring this topic to the attention of the council. There'll be some paperwork that we'll receive that will end up in the boxes. He is a retired environmental professor out of Evergreen College, and he's a very sensitive, involved individual in environmental issues. And he's personally visited with or contacted every mayor in a 2,000-mile length of Burlington Northern tracks because of his concern over a plan that Burlington Northern is implementing under the direction of their new president, who is Warren Buffett. Warren Buffett purchased lock, stock, and barrel, all of Burlington Northern. And he is financing, he's done that in order that he can finance the shipping via railroad of the oil tanker. And that's prompted a number of large-scale oil refinery engineering companies to construct the refineries necessary to take that oil from North Dakota and ship it to, for their automotive industry. He is concerned that the environmental impacts of that, because there have been three train derailments of that sort of oil. It's a very thin liquid type of oil. It's more like natural gas than oil per se. And when there are derailments, they create an environmental catastrophe, one in Canada and two in the United States. So he's contacted me, asked that I might bring his topic to the council's attention. And if we're interested, we could conjoin with other communities along this route to express concerns, to ensure that safety of the residents and such are dealt with. Not only that, but the quality of life, because they're anticipating, the figures aren't quite solidified yet, but that's some of the information he's going to provide to us. How many trains we can expect to be added to the 64 to 75 that are already passed through.
[laughing]
And it could be 50, help me now. These are long trains. I'd better get permission from the council. There's a member of the audience, are you okay?
Yeah. See, I just wanted to say, I'm going from Annan and Road, the trains go by my place all the time. There are two trains a day now that are carrying this fuel that are going through our area.
They're moving.
Over 120 cars. These cars have not been updated with what the new regulations have been proposed by the environmental regulations in Washington, DC.
You're sure.
Proposals for new cars, but they have not been, these cars are not, all of these cars are not updated at this particular point. So it's really a critical issue. Forty-three people died in Canada when one of these trains went off the rails, so it's worth listening to.
And we do have brought you down with us the Lewis County Emergency Development Response.
Which is true. It's been brought to our attention, too, because we were at the, I was at the last mayor's meeting, we talked about that a little bit with the mayors. Said, yeah, they're talking 100-plus cars on each one of these, and that is something that's very concerned for us, because we want to make sure that it does stay safe. And a lot of it was talking about going through Northern Centralia, was the big route that they're using currently, but they are shipping down this way, too. So we're going to see it here more and more. It is a concern that we're looking into.
Okay. Well, good timing. Thank you for your observation. And so, just to provide that, that would be the extent of the report. If you have additional questions or commentary, don't hesitate to ask. And I can put you in contact with Mr. Leahy if you have any interest in him. And that concludes the Mayor's report for tonight. Absent any council commentary, I jump to special reports. We're pleased to have Ms. Watson with us once again from Castle Rock School District.
Thank you.
And she said she'd take 10, 15 minutes to share with you a new program. I think she's interested.
Thank you. I'm Donna Watson, and I coordinate several programs and activities with the school district and with the Castle Rock Care Coalition. And we're always looking for opportunities to bring our programs to the Vader families, to this community. And the last time I was here, I was trying to remember, was it January or was it?
I think it was January.
Time sure flies, doesn't it? Anyway, last time I was here, we talked about Strengthening Families program, and we were hoping to get that going here in the Vader community. And here it is, the end of April, and we're close to wrapping it up. It's just been a wonderful program. We have families, Vader families, that are involved and really connected with each other and connected with us. And it's, you know, it's interesting, because, you know, I've taught this program at least a dozen times, and they all have their own personalities, very unique personalities. And some of them, you know, you're about halfway through, and you're, it just seems like it's just dragging, and it's just, there's just not a lot of movement. And this particular one in Vader has flown by. It has flown by, and the families have even said, do we have to stop? You know, when we hit week 14, because we want to keep coming, this is so amazing. And it's, you know, they're, what's, I think, so great about it is that, well, the families are wonderful. They're just wonderful. It's been so much fun working with them, but they're just so willing to try new things with their children, and they're learning some skills, taking some tools home, they're utilizing those skills, they're implementing them, and they're coming back and they're sharing with us about the changes that they're seeing with their children, the behavior changes. You know, we've had comments like, boy, the behavior chart that you showed us how to use is changing our son. We're not having as many problems. Things are, you know, we're having better communication. We're trying some of those tools that, you know, that have been recommended at our family dinners and so forth. And it's just delightful to see these changes in these families. And they're so much fun, because we really enjoy them. We're wrapping up the end of April, and we have secured funding for another Strengthening Families program for a little bit older age group. This particular one that we're wrapping up, it's for preschool to age 11. And we have funding now for 11 to 14, 13, 14. And a lot of these families have children in that age group, so they're really excited because we want to just keep going with that program. We are waiting to get permission, again, from the Vader Assembly of God to do the phase two of Strengthening Families, and we should hear momentarily. And I just want to say that the Vader Assembly of God Church has been fabulous. It's a great facility, and they've been so accommodating and welcoming to us, and we really enjoy being there with these families. So hopefully, we'll be doing phase two, and that will be the beginning of May. And we already have families, and they have friends that have children in the same age group that are interested. So they're just kind of, we're just kind of waiting to get our final approval for the facility, and then we're ready to go. We have the families, we have the people, and we're excited. It's just been great. So I just wanted to share another program that we're bringing to Vader, a youth leadership summit that we've been working on. And we have a team that's been working and developing the summit. And this will focus on middle school-aged children, and we're going to be hosting that in Vader on May the 15th at the Assembly of God Church. We're excited about that, too. We've opened it up to neighboring middle schools such as Toledo, Winlock, Tudle, and I know it's not exactly neighboring, but Wakayim County, they tend to get left out a lot, and so we've invited them, and they're very excited. So they're all on board, and they're going to be bringing middle school students here. And they're going to be learning some leadership skills, team-building activities, learning some strengths that they have that maybe they weren't aware of, and those kinds of things. So that will be an all-day event, and Commissioner Meiser will be there to do the opening. And then the students will rotate through workshops throughout the day and hopefully have a good time. So we're, again, very excited to bring another program to the Vader community. We really are looking forward to it, and we're excited to be here again.
Thank you. Well, I can tell you, speaking to council, I just have a sense that we're going to feel the long-term influence of this program, as much youth in our team.
And, you know, there is a ripple effect, because when the parents are happy, the children are happy, and they're doing better, and, you know, it does have a ripple effect throughout the community. So it's just been great to see, to witness that.
So Mayor Smith, with your permission, if I might add. Susan Barker, the superintendent for your school district, Castle Rock. Very happy that we have a resource such as Diane to bring these programs and help engage families here in the work that we're trying to do. So we have published our first newsletter in a very long time, and an article in this newsletter highlights the Strengthening Families program. I brought copies for you. Hopefully, if the work that we did to mail them is successful, you'll get one of these in the mail in the next day or two. But I wanted you to have a copy of this letter that includes the article about Strengthening Families, because I think we've been very, very fortunate to have it in Castle Rock for so many years, and thrilled to be able to bring it here. What we've found, I have a few extras if anybody would like one. What we have found is that for some families in Vader, it's just impossible for them to get to Castle Rock. And to go to Castle Rock once a week, or 14 weeks, is sometimes a time burden and a huge financial burden for them, to purchase scaffolding, to be gone that long. So we turned our thinking around last winter and talked about bringing the program here, which worked phenomenally well. We also have our elementary principal and one of our teachers coming, and I think they're coming this week, to work with families of preschool children, providing them some resources so that when those children come to school, they are ready to learn. And I saw the signs up in town, so I know that they're coming soon also. So thank you for hosting us. Thank you for participating and encouraging, in whichever way you can, families to continue to join us in this endeavor. It's going to pay off.
Well, thank you for all the [inaudible].
Thank you.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Very good. So time to give you a phone call tomorrow or the next day. We've got more.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have the number?
Yes.
Really quick. 512940.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excellent. Now that concludes our special reports. Now we'll proceed with the approval of the agenda. And I can, you have an addition? That would pertain to?
Annan and Road.
The Annan and Road information that you have.
Yep.
Okay.
I don't have much there. I only have this.
Oh.
I've gained that since 1988.
Excellent. It's like the National Archives.
Would that be under new business or old business?
We add that under item three, in which we discuss the budget surplus allocation, because it may relate to street paving and such. That was just my thought.
Same with me.
Okay. So, and in addition, a late-breaking need for the council to consider is Jeff Cummins' contract, which I believe you received. It's late information, it's taken, that we must deal with, and it's under new business. And I would consider that there's item two under new business. So council discussion of Jeff Cummins' garbage contract.
Not contract, grade ordinance.
Oh, it's ordinance that revises the garbage rate. So item two. That's all I've got. Any other council members with any agenda item addition, changes, and such? Okay. During that, then I would await council action on our agenda.
I'll put forth a, I can't even think.
A motion?
A motion. To approve the agenda with the changes marked.
Okay. Mr. Flynn has submitted a motion for your consideration to approve the agenda with the two changes as noted on item three, related to Annan and Road, under old business and a new business, and council discussion relating to Jeff Cummins' garbage ordinance. Now, do we have a second for that?
I second.
Secuted by Mr. Wilson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can now proceed with that. First item is the approval of minutes.
Aye.
Welcome.
I will make a motion, and we approve the minutes.
Okay, from May 20th.
March 27th, 2014, at 6:30 PM.
Okay. So noted, we have that motion before the council. Do we have a second?
Make a second.
Secuted by Mr. Olson. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now voucher approval for council. Don't be shy.
I won't be. I'll make a motion, and we approve the vouchers for the 1st of April 2014 for $14,168.77.
Okay. Mr. Flynn has made of that motion for your consideration. Do we have a second?
Okay.
Secuted by Mr. Pennison. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now it's public comment.
Judy Costello.
Okay.
Judy Costello, 7983, Vader. Since I'm kind of involved in all three of the events for this summer, May Day, the 4th of July, and then on and on and on, and Garageville, et cetera, I have a problem with the vendor fees. I took the liberty this week or last week to come and look at the ordinance on it. And letter number G, if you get an opportunity over the next couple of weeks to look at it, I need some clarification. It says, if you're a vendor for a community event, I believe is the way I read it, that there is no fee. And where I have the heartburn on this is the park board sets up a booth for fundraiser at our event, the VCL. The Boy Scouts have a really hard time charging these guys for a vendor fee. And what I'd like is permission on the 4th of July, the downhill races, May Day, that kind of, Jason and those guys have, I think, three or four quote booths. It should be like 40 bucks for them to give everybody, everything away for free. And I don't think we should, I don't think we should be charging them. The community, if a big carnival came to town or whatever, maybe then you might want to think about a lump sum, but. And vendors bring people to the event. You know, we need the food, and the masons, they live off of their donations, and they are one of our vendors. So, as your opportunity, if you would please review this, and if I've misunderstood it, or if my plea...
So are you asking that there's no charge for all vendors? Or just there's no charge for the vendors that are doing donations?
I'm asking for no charge for all vendors. I just think it just, it disrupts our community events. And what vendors are there?
I understand.
The ones I, the ones I just listed. See what I'm saying?
I understand.
How about this one?
I, I understand what Judy's coming by. Years and years ago, vendor fees was good. We used to have dump tanks. We used to have this, we had this, and this, and this. We need to build these functions up in the city, and I say, no vendor fees, until we can get enough vendors in town to make it worth us to have something, because we're going this way. We aren't going this way. That's my opinion. And I, it's like the Donnie Clodges, okay? We have the breakfast up there, but we don't pay a vendor fee, because it happens to be in the, in the building. But you have people coming here with a trailer for hot dogs or whatever. We need these people to come in town. We need to get the growth back here.
Well, a perfect example is the mason trailer from Longview will be at Kevin's downhill event at the noon time period, and then they're at my 4th of July event at 6 o'clock.
And the way the rules read now, they pay two vendor fees.
And the way, that's right, because they're basically at two different events. They've moved that trailer, and that makes no sense at all.
It doesn't make any money, I can tell you this.
Yeah, and they don't, and that's the other thing. Most of these people don't make much money, you know, for what few pennies they do.
As councils aware, the public comment period is an opportunity for the community to have their opinions heard, but it's not necessarily for the format to engage in a debate on the issue. We could add it to the agenda for additional council consideration, if you'd like. Or we could do research with Judy and put it on the next city council meeting. But I know May Day's coming up quickly.
Because I've got a phone call.
So.
What were you going to say, Jim?
I was going to say that we need time to check into it and see what we can and can't do based on how the ordinance is written.
So, I mean, the public comment is bringing it to the council's awareness.
Well, I'll just add to that, because I remember last year, we had a guy that did caramel corn, and because, and I told him, as an event organizer, we were not going to charge vendor fees, but he has to clear it with the city. And he didn't make a lot of money. He wasn't planning on coming this year. And I've let the word out that we're combining events, so that would be a better shot at getting him to come. So that's something to consider.
Well, we can do our research. We can take it under advisement. And we have a council meeting before the May Day event. It'll be short notice, but I think we could work within those time constraints. So I'd say consensus of the council, we'll take that.
That sounds like a way to do it, yeah.
Strategy.
All right. So then shooting ourselves at foot.
Thank you. Thank you for your observations. Very good. We'll be in touch.
Thank you.
Now we proceed.
You need more. You need any more, you go to the voting before you proceed with it.
No. I don't think there are no more.
[laughing]
Yeah, hey, I was missing. Let's dive into our unfinished business. You will note that we have eight items, and we're at 7 o'clock. We have a formidable murderer's row of business, but if we talk fast and we're determined, let's see if we can march through this, not so fast that we lose the spirit and inspiration, but decisively. First involves, number one, wastewater treatment topics. Item 1A, it's an update on the Liberty Evans LLC, formerly Blueraise, and the status. And I tell the council that every day is brought to New York with regard to that. It might startle you to realize what's been going on. But the documents that you have, that you got just before the meeting started, were a last-second product of what's been going on. And I'll flesh it out, but I'm going to try, I'm taking signals to keep my comments within three minutes. I know you probably haven't had a chance to read it, because, yes, sorry. What's been happening is that we were informed by Representative Blueraise, specifically Victoria Gelders, that they are contesting the Liberty Evans' right, or claim of control and authority and ownership of the equipment that's on our waste treatment facility. And that, that whole process is in arbitration, and that any claim on the part of Liberty Evans to recycle or refurbish that will, would be subject to legal action. And that Blueraise intention is to make good on the MOU, in which they were required to come in and remove the equipment and make site, restore it to its original condition. They claimed that Liberty Evans had no legal documents that they could show the city of Vader, that they had the authority to do what they said they were going to do. So that engaged in an intensive research in the last 48 hours with our city attorney and with officials with Liberty Evans. And it turns out that there is a court, a Superior Court document that we now have in our possession, which does, in fact, confirm the claims that Liberty Evans has made. They do have judges... They do have judges, a legal instrument that empowers them to come in and do what they said they were going to do, which was reported, I think, in our last council. And then, we researched their claim that there was an arbiter involved, and arbitration was ongoing, and that, in actuality, was not happening. There is no arbiter involved, and even if they were, the Superior Court judge would trump any such arbitration effort. So, it was a blatant misstatement on the part of the Blue Array officials. Blue Array indicated that they were going to come in sometime next week, and they were going to seize and take all of their equipment and property. And if we didn't allow that, they would then sue the city for seventy-five thousand dollars that they claim that we owe them, which, of course, I'm sure the council recalls that threat in the past, and there is no legal basis for their claim to be owed them. So, Lewis County Sheriff's Department will be made aware of the impending contract of the, this document that you received is a letter that was approved by the council, which would authorize Liberty Evans to, on our property, and it covers the insurance and liability issues that we needed to deal with, and we've been massaging those over the last four days. At five-thirty this afternoon, Mark Flashour, the representative from Liberty Evans, approved the modifications that our city attorney did. And he's, he approves the document that you have in your hands at this very moment. And that, with that document in hand, they will come on Monday morning, and they will carry out the authority given to them by the Superior Court judge. So, they'll begin that process of recycling, cleaning up, and so forth and so on. There, that represents item number one.
Hey, do they need to...
Yes, you need to approve.
Can I quickly just read, I figured out what the new part is in here, so if you...
Yes, that's for you.
Down at the very bottom of page one, look at the one that says April tenth on the top, make sure it says April tenth. The second to the last line, it says, city's wastewater treatment property. Right there is where the new language begins, it says, but J. H. Kelly assumes no responsibility or obligation with respect to the acts or, or omissions of Blue Array LLC, whether on or off the Vader site, or with respect to Blue Array's LLC, Blue Array LLC's dealings or arrangements with the City of Vader, the Department of Ecology, or representatives thereof. Nothing in this letter should be interpreted as an acknowledgement by J. H. Kelly that it has any obligation to perform the work related to clean up, to clean up of the site referenced here under. That's the new language that I found by skipping.
And there was a lot of complex legal discussion relating to that phraseology, because the, Liberty Evans is concerned that the agreement with the Blue Array under the MOU to come in and clean up the property, might, the city could perhaps hold them to the same legal, what's the word, action from that MOU. And they would like to have a little more flexibility, so that they're not under the same rigid requisites, because they would like to see if they can retool the equipment, and then perhaps have it surface as one of the alternatives. Does that make sense?
Doesn't, didn't Blue Array, the MOU gave them thirty days to clean the place up, and it's been four months.
Right.
Doesn't that come under the rules of abandonment?
And none of that was ever mentioned, but it probably could be if...
They abandoned the property and just left, and it's not necessarily, they have no contact with it whatsoever.
Joe did address that, and his legal, and Joe was the one who provided the verbiage, and so he's representing the city. He's pretty confident that this covers the Liberty Evans concerns, will accomplish what the City of Vader would like to have happen. But he says, the MOU was officially terminated, and the court order, Superior Court specifically, and you should have a copy of that, did we give the council members a copy of that, Judge Smith?
I don't have a copy of that.
Okay, then, I do. And it turns over everything to Liberty Evans to do with it. And so, under that authority, it effectively negates, obviates, the validity of the MOU. So, that, I think hopefully addresses your abandonment issue. But the word abandonment isn't a part of that discussion. And I'm sorry that we didn't get you that court order, because that's important, that was one of the initial claims of the Blue Array people, that we didn't have a legal document. But we'll get that to you as soon as possible after the meeting is over.
Is that different than the Supreme Court case, is that different than the Supreme Court case number fourteen dash two? Zero zero six five three?
No, this is it.
Oh, okay.
That is it. So, it was signed by Judge Susan Clark, Superior Court Judge from Vancouver, Washington, on March seventh, two thousand fourteen. And I was going to share with you some of the verbiage. It says, it is hereby ordered, adjudged, and decreed, plaintiff, the Liberty Evans LLC, consistent with the concession of judgment executed by Blue Array LLC, Liberty Evans is awarded final judgment and the right to full recovery, possession, and ownership of the collateral set forth out, set out in section seven of the secured convertible note and security agreement, and that Blue Array LLC's interest and all unknown and other persons or entities claiming an interest in said collateral is hereby foreclosed. And then it states that it's further ordered, adjudged, and decreed that the following personal and intellectual property comprises a portion of the collateral to which plaintiff Liberty Evans is entitled to recovery, possession, and certain ownership over, A, the patents and patent applications pending for the United States Patent and Trademark Office, is set forth in the attached notice, which has assigned all the patents and patent applications to Liberty Evans LLC, and all equipment and materials currently owned by Blue Array, which may be located onsite and/or stored at multiple Blue Array projects, including the wastewater project that Blue Array has with City of Vader. I drew an accurate copy of the such and such, attached to its exhibit A. So, the document...
Sounds like it's a done deal.
It's a done deal. And Joe Rayberger has analyzed it, he's talked to the state, Washington State Secretary of State, to confirm the nonexistence of the arbiter. So, the parties, they're blowing smoke, Blue Array, so there you have it, that's along that show. We have a comment from a member of the public?
Yes.
The council deferred.
Just so they, if, if you do need to show the topics coming on that, we could have a copy of that here, so that they can have that. And then I might suggest also, for future, to send out a letter to Blue Array, the people who, from Blue Array, of a trespass letter, so that that's already in the, in place, so we can...
I should inform the council that pursuant to all of this, council, I think, was made aware a couple of, three or four meetings ago, that of a potential plan to put a cable across the entrance, where we store the gravel and other street improvement materials as you make turn the corner, putting a cable there, preventing residents from dumping yard waste and garbage in the tree limb area. And so, knowing that we've considered that, I informed our Public Works employee to initiate that effective immediately. And so, we would, that would enhance our current security, and which you know is rather weak, that we've got a gate with one padlock on it that you could waffler. But, so, good, like a pair of bolt pedals with the...
I would say that's fourteen percent of the money, really.
Well, now the secret, now the secret. But, so, we're, we've taken that as a little action, too, to see what we can do to ensure that we not, we not enable the Blue Array people to engage in that activity. One more comment from the public?
So, does that mean we can't get down to the brush?
Which, that does mean that, because, yeah, we've initiated, the council was made aware of a potential program in which we informed the residents that we're going to have at least two or three days in which our Public Works employee is, we'll advertise the dates, you can, the residents can bring all of their limbing materials.
Oh, really?
And we'll have the county chipper in place, and we'll have the employee with the city truck, if there are those who would need assistance in hauling the limbs to it, those occasions would take care of their tree limbs. The reason being that we don't, because what happens is, that our good-hearted citizens bring their limbs, but they also bring their yard waste, but worse of all, they bring their garbage. And we have gotten lumber, last week, we had seven or eight bags of garbage deposited, and that is a pain in the neck, especially if it gets mixed up with all this stuff. And it's happened numerous times. So, it was intended to be a chip thing, because you can't burn in the city, and that's another thing. I've noted residents are, there's some residents who just feel the right to burn, and there's going to have to be some follow-up from that, because what's good for one resident has to be good for everyone. So, this is our...
I can get into a discussion with this, but I'll do that privately, because it's putting some, all this deal there privately.
Yeah, that would be good, thank you for that. But, oh, it's because of the security, maybe it is. All right, so, we need to have some council action on that letter, that's important. Stop talking, and hope that...
Council action on which letter?
The one that would be presented to Liberty Evans LLC, to give them access to the site. They wanted to cover their...
Do you need a motion on that?
Yes, we do.
I'll put a motion forward that we agree to the terms in the letter, and we approve it.
Okay, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn, to approve the letter, which has been formulated by our city attorney, and been approved formally by Representative Liberty Evans. Afternoon, do we have a second for that motion? Second, seconded by Mr. Olson, Lewis County. Have any other commentary? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent, very good, thank you for that. We will, Mr. Shai has asked, or Mr. Shai, Mr. Rayberger has asked for confirmation of that early tomorrow. Okay, next item B, council action on final professional services contract with BHC. You know, I don't think you need me to ramble on about the need for this action, in our last meeting.
We discussed this the last meeting, we went over this, we went over the change rates.
This is the final question.
Somebody else put a motion forward.
I'll put a motion forward to approve this professional services agreement with BHC.
Wow, thank you. Mr. Shai has made a motion for your action to approve this professional services agreement with BHC. This is historic, as they're taking here, because we're going to get started with our engineering.
Amazing.
Do we have a second?
I'll take it.
Seconded by Mr. Pennison, okay. Any other council commentary? Done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow, okay, council discussion on site sewer repair regulations. This is also a significant historic event, because Mike Marshall, Gibson Olsen...
I remind you...
Yes, wax historical. This document was needed in our last meeting, and it's, it's the document that I think you've had a chance to read, and so I won't say anymore about it, but would invite the council to deliberate on it. That for sure.
That is short. Mike Marshall, who is Gibson Olsen's representative, who is working on with our side sewer process, will just say example of side sewer language, a possible side sewer language. This is a copy of the, of the Kelso city code. You don't have that? And this is an example of what the language would even look like in order for the City of Vader to, in, get those grant monies switched over from public property to the private side sewers. Remember, we talked about that at the last meeting? And that the city would have to be willing to put an ordinance in place that requires the side sewers on private property to be repaired or replaced if they're leaking. And so, this is an example of that language. And if the council agrees that they will, are willing to put together something similar to this, then we can move forward with CDBG grant money, and letting them know that you guys are willing to do this, and we're going to do this, so we can get that process started. So, basically, they just need to know, are you willing to do this kind of a thing? And if you say tonight that you are, then we can move forward.
Our city attorney, Carol Morris, has reviewed this, and she's supportive of...
We don't need a motion for this, we just need to say aye or nay, right?
Yeah, just, should we press forward based on the verbiage of this?
I go say yes.
Okay, so you're supportive of this effort? Probably haven't had too much, Joe just got back in town.
Oh, no, no, I've read every single one of these.
Okay.
My only concern with, with this is that it was, when it says the, there's a right-of-way, right? There's an easement from the center of the road to the, to the property.
Yes.
So, when this talks about the homeowner's responsibility to repair broken portions, is it the entire side sewer from, it's just the portion on their property?
Exactly.
So, if the break is in the front half of their driveway, and that's on city property, then it's still the city's responsibility.
That's correct.
Right, I think I got...
So, even if it's in the, so as long as it's only, if it's in the right-of-way, then it's the city's responsibility, and if it's outside, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
It doesn't change that.
I didn't, I didn't see that specified.
What this setting the stage for is shifting CDBG funding, and that, the repair of the pipes from the house to the city property line is going to be paid for with grant funding to those whose incomes are below a set level. If you, your revenue, your earnings are above that level, then you would be required to pay the costs of those, unless we can find another funding source. But that's a pretty much a long shot, I'm looking at Kathy Reed for that.
Yeah, Kathy Reed, Department of Commerce. It, it could be done as part of a future project, like when you apply to ecology for your construction funding, or whatever wastewater treatment plant upgrades you choose to make. You could also include in there a request to the private property work. It's, that's not, it would be a different source of funding, it would be a whole different setup than this direct benefit money. I don't know if you would get that or not. So, there is kind of some timing here, you know? You're going to force that people have to repair their side sewer, but is there going to be some time in which they can do it? The strategy you're using right now is to get as many as possible fixed with grant money.
Exactly.
So that the city doesn't have to take on a larger gross loan. The challenge is that people do not like to document their income for this program, I can tell you with experience from other places, so. But I think everything you said supports, right? You're, you're passing an ordinance like this, and saying you're going to implement it, as, it's, that could be part of your request for a change of scope of work to community development. The other big part of it is going to be saying, and here's our plan for documenting those that income, and making sure the people that qualify for it can have that work paid for. And I've been working on that, and Mike Marshall and I will work on that some together, but I've been developing that.
Hey, this is probably over all of our, but those who know, Kathy, and you believe this document is reasonable and necessary for us to accomplish that side sewer repair at no cost for those whose earnings are below a certain... at no cost for those whose earnings are below a certain, so in my opinion, this represents a lot of very savvy input from people who know what they're doing.
If I can just add, most cities have an ordinance that they, you're responsible for the pipes on your property. Not all of the cities enforce it. So this is kind of a twofer right here. We're saying not only are you having this ordinance, but that you're going to be enforcing it within some reasonable time period.
So, okay. Does that help provide some clarity? It took a lot longer to claim that.
I did.
I'm feeling good.
You did show yourself.
I was too sure. So could I get another visual affirmation of the council's willingness to authorize that we proceed with action appropriate to this?
Yes.
Got a yes?
Yes.
Yes, good. Okay. We got a unanimous support with that. We'll take this input and we'll process it to its logical conclusion. Thank you. Item D, council consideration of change in sewer operator strategy. Oh, boy. I think that you've been briefed in the last two weeks as to what's been happening with our efforts to identify human beings with certification permits that would enable that person to replace Nev Peltier, our part-time public works employee, who's doing the sampling and testing under the authority of the Winlock Public Works Director, Dennis Baker, who, and Winlock has told us that it's supposed to be short-term and they want us to fit our own person. And you're aware that we've advertised for that and the grim reality, being brutally candid, is that the cheapest one was three thousand four hundred and something per month, which was the TL employee. And then the second one that I personally interviewed was three thousand eight hundred something. And then the fourth one was a qualified individual from Spanaway, I think it's Span, and it was four thousand three hundred a month. That's for 12 hours of work per week. It is, huh? No, it was 12 hours. And it might have been the case, but the upshot is that's not-
It's a lot of money.
Unacceptable as far as the mayor is concerned. And I was not, I hope that the council shares that perspective. And so since I've got the task of trying to work out these administrative things and present it to the council for your action, as we've carefully contemplated our options, we've, Jill, who's the financial expert, obviously, in our accounting process.
You got that handled now.
We think, I would propose for the council to approve a strategy to re-advertise, to hire an individual, a part-time public works employee with certification that we would employ, not just embrace as a volunteer or under contract. Catch that? Go ahead and add some.
In that I realize as you were talking that I did not provide that worksheet that I gave you.
Oh.
I did not provide that to council. I knew there was something I was going to forget and that must have been it. So if I could explain to them what we did, we anticipated that hiring a private contractor for 12 hours a week was going to be cheaper than paying a full, than paying an employee part-time with the benefits and all that. So that's why we went that contractor route. We found that that's not the case. So I went to our Association of Washington Ladies website and figured out what an average part-time sewer operator gets paid. And when we plugged those numbers in, if we were to pay them as an employee, we would be right in our budgeted amount that we have for that position. So it's going to, it looks like it's going to be cheaper to do it that way instead. And so we're proposing that to council that you would be willing to change the strategy from finding a contractor who obviously is, they're more expensive than what we have budgeted, to hiring somebody as a part-time employee to do the sewer operator.
Yeah. Here's a breakdown that Jill has made. So we do, this is evidence that what she's saying is accurate and we once again apologize if you don't have a copy of this. But it makes sense to me that we should try to exercise this. I personally met with Nev Peltier today to inform him because your council's aware that he is retired and he would like to have, instead of increasing hours for this responsibility, we'd like to focus on his public works jobs, which is filling potholes and maintaining the city streets and landscaping and such. He said that as long as we're in this process, he's okay. And he has talked to Dennis Baker with Winlock and they're fine with it for now. So we have that positive feedback from Nev and Winlock that if we want to explore this, they will give us a month or two.
I know, I think I still know them, old guys that are different cities south.
Yeah.
And they might know a retiree that is still certified.
Yes, I have heard about this individual and Nev knows him and he's going to talk to him and see if we can entice him.
But if you don't mind, I'll make some inquiries and-
Please do.
See if I can find a retiree that, in Castle Rock, there used to be one I had all the time, but he's too old now.
Oh, is he?
Yeah, he's my age.
Nev was, went to a meeting on March 17th with, I forget, I forgot his name, but he was made aware of retired fellow, maybe from Castle Rock. So it may be the same person.
It might be.
Anyway, he's going to approach him too so we get that. I also have a lead that I might be able to follow up on.
That was my first contact in Castle Rock.
Exactly. Historical. So I guess what I'm asking is the council would, would grant authority for me to proceed with that new strategy?
Why would we change our strategy?
Motion is probably not necessary, but you'd be approval of approving of that. Okay. Justin?
Yes.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. That will keep you advised. Thank you. Okay, let's see. And reaffirmation of sewer lab supply purchases. Part and parcel with this strategy is I think you're aware that when Blu-ray departed, we were then left holding the sewer testing and sampling bag and that we've maintained our lab certification over the years. Well, we're a little short of materials. We've done with Jill's involvement, we've done an analysis of the equipment needed. Did we give them? All right. You've got that in your package? That's it. And you see, the total funding exists and is available for us. If we acquire this equipment, our lab will have everything that we need to maintain its certification, which in my mind is what the city must do in order to maintain its viability. And when we do, finally locate somebody who can do this, we can take him out there and we can point to that and say, this is the lab and this is what we have and you should be able to do it.
Can we lock that lab up?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, we can. And our village locksmith is back from his snowbird sojourn and so-
We already changed all those locks.
We have. When Blu-ray left, we did.
Okay.
Locked them out.
Sounds good.
But if we had to do it again, we've got our handy man here.
I think what we've lacked in the past is a comprehensive inventory.
Yes.
And we have remedied that situation. So we are actively adding to our inventory every time we purchase something, making sure that everything's documented. So we know what's ours and what isn't, what shouldn't be anybody else.
We're much better than that. I know that the more senior members of the council are well aware of the drama we've had with our previous public works people and our lab equipment.
That's the reason I asked about the locks.
Right. So I would seek council approval of it. The funding would come from sewer fund, which is flush and healthy.
We have budgeted for supplies, but we have enough to handle these.
Do we need a motion on that?
Yes, we do.
I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the equipment for the lab down at the sewer plant post haste.
Okay. You've heard the motion submitted to the council to approve the purchase of the material that's noted and do it as quickly as possible. Secuted by Mr. Wilson. Is there any feedback or commentary from the council prior to going?
I have a question. So, so do we know for a fact that this is the equipment that we need to have a lab and that if we hire this next individual, he's not going to come in and say, no, this isn't what I need, I need something else?
I'm pretty sure because we've talked to Gibson Olson people and-
Well, Dennis Baker from Winlock, Indianianist, and informs everything that we need. He was working with Carla Jones, who's from the Department of Ecology, who does the accreditation.
Yes.
So it's all been-
They were out there and did the analysis.
And this is the list that they gave us and so that's what they said we need in order to accreditate our own lab and get it. Basically, they're accrediting the equipment that's being used and authorizing that they are valid, good working equipment. And so, so there will be a short accreditation process where there's some testing run through to make sure that all the numbers come out right and that the gear is working properly and then it's accredited.
Do we have to send these, these meters off for annual calibrations or anything like that?
Oh, for annual, there are calibrations for some of the equipment. I personally don't know what the difference-
Because we might need to have backups if you have to send these off for a month at a time to get calibrated.
I don't know about that. I'm not aware of that, but we can check into it. I mean, at this point, this is the equipment we need to get accredited. If we need additional equipment for situations like that, then yeah, that's a good question to ask. So we can ask that and see if we need additional supplies, but this is the minimum.
And there is equipment out there. And if the council members were curious and wanted to see it, if you haven't, the lab, to our credit, has been, both the facilities out there, building, both sides of this block building have been cleaned meticulously. It's in the best condition and I've seen it in my tenure as mayor because it has been absolutely horrific out there at times, but now it's in very good condition. And if you'd like to see it, we'd have no problems, especially those of you who have some technical expertise in such things. So where were we with this? We had a second. So any other observations, comments from the council? Okay, hearing none, all in papers, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Very, thank you.
Mayor, I know I'm buttoning here, but just a friendly reminder, since you're on the wastewater topic, that we're having our net, our second council workshop talking about wastewater, it's just so busy about the wastewater fund, about possible funding sources for future work, impact rates with different funding scenarios, that's been the money discussion. That's going to be next Friday, April 18th here, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. So both the council and systems are welcome.
Oh, thank you so much for reminding us. We should have put it on the agenda.
I should have added it under agenda approval. Sorry.
Put a flyer, I had to remind people.
Okay, yeah. So 1:00 to 3:00, next Friday, April 18th. Thank you for that. Wonderful. All right, then that I think includes item one. I would jump into item two. This is a biggie, council action on planner community development services contract. And this is also, for those who may not be sensitive to gravity of what the council may do, this is the new latest and hopefully last contract proposal by Rob White. And it represents a significant reduction in his costs to the city. And I'm hopeful that you've had a chance to read it and that you're supportive of it. And through our negotiating processes, we've reduced his monthly fees considerably. You'll note on the last page, I think he provides some information regarding his employees, which enabled this dramatic reduction in fees. In consultation with Jill before the meeting and as we were going over what this actually means, Rob pointed out that it's probably important for the council to be aware that when he, if he's approved with your action tonight, it's going to result in what he estimates would incur some expenses, one of which would be a probable cost for the codification of our ordinances and computerize everything would be from $3,000 to $5,000. And that the services necessary to accomplish the permitting process would be probably another $5,000 to $8,000, which would total between $10,000 and $12,000. And obviously, that is the product that we would get from this entity, but I think the council needs to be aware that that's what we're looking at. And if you ask the mayor for his opinion, I would say that it's worth every dime of it.
Can I add my?
Yes.
Because I'm the person who gets to handle any permits or things that come in relating to this, our system is a mess and it really has to be done. And I, I mean, it's a lot of money to put up at one time and it's a hard pill to swallow, but if we can do this, we will be set. Our, all of our ordinances will be up to date regarding our planning and development, all of our permitting processes, all of our fees, all of, all of that will be perfectly up to the most current standard and, oh, you guys, I can't tell you how important that is because not being up to current standards leaves us at a huge liability, huge risk for things to happen that we probably wouldn't want to happen. And so I'm just giving you my opinion and from my point of view. I mean, this would be huge and we would have real qualified exemplary professionals putting this together so we can trust the work that is being done, so.
Can I ask, can I ask a question?
Yes.
When you said he's going to codify the ordinances?
Yes.
Are you telling me that he's going to go through the ordinances that we have?
Everyone.
Take care of the redundancies?
Mm-hmm.
And is it going to give us any enforcement authority on any of the ordinances that we have?
They're going to clean up all of them.
Because right now, we have all this stuff written down, we can't do anything. It's pretty frustrating. It makes us really a joke.
Oh, yeah.
And I know we looked at other planners that were less money than this guy, but now that he's dropped his price, the prices are getting closer and closer.
Oh, yeah.
And the other ones weren't going to do any of this stuff.
Yep, they wouldn't produce this product. No, I can't tell you.
You could finally get rid of some of the trash sitting around. Right, Judy?
Jill is not overstating the potential impact that this will have on the next 40 years of City of Davis. And Carol Morris is going to also work with him, but we won't have to pay her hourly fees because she, she works in the same building as Rob White. So they're within 20 feet of walking distance of each other and so we're getting a twofer in this process. And of course, it's important to know the cost because you'd have to come up with that funding somewhere and it relates directly to item three, which is next, council discussion of budget surplus allocations.
It's going to hit us.
It's going to hit us, yeah. But here again, so the action on this agenda item, I would hope that you would recognize the impact of his revised, reduced contract offer and that you would accept that favorably and would be willing to engage in some supportive action in further service because time is of the essence. And I think most of the council members are aware of some of the- And I think most of the council members are aware of some of the big land use issues that are on the premises, that need to be impacted by this action. We had one individual from the audience who would like to make a comment. Would the council approve of that comment from the audience?
Sure.
It's a form of a question, give me some little dance here, but I want to be sure that I understand this. If this money is shelled out and this gentleman goes through and puts everything in order, then will the city council or whatever entity enforces these laws actually be able to go out and have teeth in it and get these problems resolved and the challenges that have been going on for years?
Yeah. Because, yes, well, I don't want to leap in. The council would like to respond, but I can hardly constrain myself, because, yeah, it's the nuisance ordinance, principally.
Right, because this has been so hard on people, very hard, like Judy Cusello and other people, and then to be disappointed each time.
Well, we worked for a year and a half trying to get these things passed. We got them passed, and we passed them three separate times, and each time, the legal people change their mind and tells us we're not doing it.
That's why I'm asking my simple questions.
I had the same question and the same frustrations, and that's the reason I don't want to see us spend the money, but I'm sick and tired of sitting here and people saying, "Why don't you do this?", and we don't do anything. You know, we've got people sitting around making junkyard out of our city, and we have no teeth in not being able to do anything.
That's it.
So, that's the reason I want to see something happen, and if this is what we have to do to get something done, then I'm all for it.
Okay. We have another individual...
Well, if that was the time for that, but...
Would you care to hear one more comment from the audience?
I'm just curious with yard adjudications and stuff like that, I was there in orders that takes care of that sort of thing, sort of thing with yard jards and all that.
Nuisance ordinance, yeah, that's what we just mentioned. We've had to put it on hold because, well, we won't revisit it, but yeah. All of this is going to result in a nuisance ordinance with enforceable teeth.
Excellent. Who enforces that, by the way?
Those county sheriffs.
Oh, good.
What city involved it? Okay, well then, I think we need a motion.
I'm sorry, I've got to sneak it in before you say the motion. There's one blank here that does need to be addressed, and that's on the first page, and that's considering the amount, because that's up to council's decision. We can either put in this contract an exact amount, or we can insert there and say not to exceed council's allotted budget for that fiscal year. And then, we can address the actual amount, it doesn't have to be in the contract, it can be... Because this is a contract for two years, so each year, when you set a budget for that particular line item, then the contract will say you have to stay within whatever that budget is that you set. Does that make sense? Instead of putting the number in here for one year and having it be a two-year contract, which seems kind of confusing to me, it seems like it would be easier to just say...
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed the annual budget set by council for that fiscal year.
Just a little flexibility.
Yeah, that way you guys can decide what you want to set it, to have a note that will apply to this contract.
Thank you for... Okay, I hope that helps. So, maybe we have to...
I interrupted Kevin, he was going to give a motion, I think.
If I have to include a figure in that blank or some appropriate...
Well, actually, it doesn't have to include a figure, because he can only do this contract... We will need to decide the figure, but that will be after the contract's approved. If you're okay with working with this guy and you approve this contract, then the next item is looking at our budget and saying, "How much do you want to put towards that?"
Well, it's going to affect the budget.
Well, that's what we would talk about at the next... Well, if you look at your budget sheet that I gave you just this evening, you'll see that we have at least $35,000, $35,958 in the budget that is not accounted, not allocated.
Allocated.
Thank you. And so, the money's there to do it this year. That's another reason why we might want to encourage it, because we have it this year.
So, we can pretty much...
Okay. You still feel...
And we would still have surplus.
I still would like to put a motion forward that we approve this contract for a city planner with Rob White, and if we have to, put in that approval or in the motion that we set his fee based on the amount allotted in our annual budget.
I heard the motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to approve the contract submitted by Rob White, with the eventual insertion in the blank as noted. And do we have a second for this motion?
I'll second it.
Submitted by Mr. Shai. Now, do we have an additional council input, feedback, question? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. How does that contain?
Thank you so much.
That's huge.
It's all your fault, Andy, you gave us birthday cake.
Full of Bama bickers. Well, let's dive ahead here. Well, I'm going to insert here, just so that you know, that what this is going to require, Mr. White has made it clear that as soon as his contract is approved, then he's going to inform the mayor and city council that we will need to reconstitute a city planning committee. And so, but we can discuss that in our next council meeting, but that will be a challenge, but nonetheless, it was part of this effort to drag us into modernity.
In the what?
Modernity. Oh, okay.
Write that one down.
They're none of those 25 centers.
That's... We'll contribute that to the park funds. All right, item number three, council discussion on budget surplus allocation. We started that last council meeting, it was too long, so we backed it up. Jill referred to the document that you've got that kind of explains the budget carryover from 2013.
Can I explain it?
Oh, please do.
Because I'm sure some of them have heard my spiel before.
Yes.
Basically, the state auditors, in order for us, one of the things they require of us is to have at least one month's worth of expenditures in each fund set aside in reserve for emergencies. They prefer that we have two months' worth of expenditures, and that's based on your previous year's expenditures. They take the full year expenditures divided by 12, and whatever that amount is, that's considered one month's worth of expenditures. So, you'll see in this paper, you'll see one month expenditures held in reserve, and then the second month. Again, the second month isn't technically required, but it's really favorable to have that second month amount in reserve. So, we can... So, that's why it's subtracted out there. Also, the park funds rolled over to 2014. That $3,000 that you see there is the money that was set aside from parks last year that they didn't get a chance to expend yet, and council had told them or approved that we would roll those funds over into this year. So, that's where we're rolling that over. Also, the donations that they receive for the different projects that people had raised money, that $1,400, that's also part of that rollover money, so that's included there. So, the park gets their money that's already been promised to them. So, then what's left over is this $35,000. So, that's where this planning budget money would need to come out of this fund.
Do we figure that planning budget money around $12,000 or $15,000?
Yeah.
$12,000?
You said $10,000, $12,000.
Okay, so $10,000 or $12,000. So, that leaves us $23,000, roughly $23,000, $24,000.
But you're aware that that second month of excess is expression.
Yeah, but I'm also aware that we're coming up for audit the end of the year.
Yes.
And we are trying to get our water system back.
Yes, we are.
So, the more we have in reserve, the better we look. And I don't know how everybody else feels, but I like to get our water back so we control it. So, if we can keep that extra money in there for a second month reserve, that gives us a better look when they view us. And we have $23,000, and we were going to look for grants that have matching fund grants or whatever, and see if we can double our money, so why not leave that in there as a... For that second month balance, go after some grants that have matching funds or non-matching funds, and see if we can double that money, and make ourselves look better at the end of the year and a better shot at that audit.
Yeah. Well, I would applaud that observation. And our last meeting, you recall that when we talked about looking for grant funding, they were going to have a transportation board meeting, which I'm now a voting member of, representing the west side of I-5. And they promptly canceled that meeting, so I was hoping to reschedule it.
There is... No, there's two transportation meetings, and this is the first one that you're not required to go to. It's the second one that's coming up that hasn't happened yet.
Okay. Well, the meeting I was going to go to, that I hope to learn of what options may be out there, I was not able to report because of that. But, so I'm echoing Mr. Flynn's hope that there might be some way, because paving our streets is one of the top priorities. And you're aware that we have $18,000 plus $3,000, and we have $21,000 that's currently available for paving purposes, if you want to know what amount is there, and that doesn't...
That's not on here.
Not on there.
No, that's not on... Yeah, but I still say that, not to forget that money that's in the paving fund, but just deal with this excess money and see what else, before we start spending it, figure out what else is out there, because we have some manipulation powers with the money in the bank. And it gives us a shot at funds that we haven't had a shot at before.
Yes. It sure does. And along those lines, we've talked about the grant that we're pursuing with Burlington Northern, a small grant, but council, maybe the newer members are probably not aware that several years ago, I was approached by the pastor of the Assembly of God Church, and he indicated that if the city had the financial means to purchase the house, the red house that's to the east of the church property, if we were to buy that house, which is now for sale, they would be willing to consider swapping that property if the city wanted to engage in an agreement with them. But I know they had a board meeting yesterday, and the topic of the sale of the lot that's owned south of the jail came up at the board meeting. And the board considered the feasibility of selling to the city of Bader that property to the south of the building without the city buying the red house and that property. So, that's a startling disclosure and interesting possibility on the part of the city. But I'm going to propose, in furtherance of Mr. Flynn's observation, that perhaps we could approach Burlington Northern with a project proposal to use funds in a grant format, if we could provide matching funds, to purchase that land for park development. I believe, based on my conversations with the Burlington Northern grant representative, that it might be something that they would consider. They look for ways to improve parks, whether it's with equipment or the expansion of parks that cities are trying to develop. So, I guess what I'm saying is that maybe we could, if we could allocate some of that overage, I'm not saying how much, but maybe we could conjoin with Burlington Northern and accomplish that property acquisition.
That would be a... That park is a very good addition. That piece of land would be a great addition for the park.
But I'm not saying for what the council to do, but just a thought for your consideration. And it is grant related, and if you're getting doubling your money if we use it wisely. And then now, I think, Mr. Wilson, before the meeting, you wanted to add the Ananen Road, because our paving projects, one of which we're continuing to pursue, and that's a whole other topic for our next council meeting. You recall that we failed to get an engineer to give us an estimate for repairs, but we have an option now, we should be getting that in the next... Sometime next week, we'll get an estimate to find out what to repair of the drainage pipes, fix the drainage problem under Little Crane, and maybe pave 13 feet of Ananen Road. And we have $21,000 in our street paving fund, but if you wanted to throw a little bit more towards paving that 13-foot section along Ananen Road, 150 feet, something for the council to consider. But Mr. Wilson has some information that perhaps at this moment in our discussion you share with us.
I'm ready.
Okay.
I have a lot of interest in what's going on with Little Crane Cafe and Burlington Northern. I started this pack of records here and everything in 1990 because Burlington Northern was going to take and gate off the north and the south side of Ananen Road, period. In these documents here, on April 29th, 1896, it was signed June 11th, 1896, for the railroad company to have railway installed from the Little Falls Clay Company, 1896. That's when the railroad was put in. On June 12th, 1926, which a lot of you don't know, or none of you do, there used to be a spur radio... A spur radio... A spur track that went around the Little Crane building, and we used to load Christmas trees in it. I was here at those times, and the other commodities would be put in the railroad cars there, then they'd go on out past where they're putting the building now and stuff in there. That's where the spur road went, come out down by the Sumer Lagoon, and dropped Highway 506 also. Then, the bridge was closed down in December 2nd, 1940, because it was about to cave in. I wasn't here then. On August 20th, 1954, Lewis County, because of this bridge, took over maintenance of Ananen Road, Lewis County. Lewis County. Ananen Road also is 200 feet, not by those railroad people telling you and me, "Oh, well, Little Crane has 13 feet." No, they don't. They have nothing, period. It goes up to their window, their drive-up window, period. That fence line you see on all those people's property is all listed in right here. And so, then in February 9th, 1988, Lewis County gave up the rights back to the railroad company, that they were not going to maintain it anymore, all right here, too. I'm telling you what I have here. And so then, here, two recently, five years ago, Lewis County took back the rights to maintain Ananen Road again from the north to south. And then, last year, Lewis County gave back the right to Burlington Northern Railroad, and that's where it is today. And my concern is, and being in office here for a long time, 30 years almost, that I will make this a matter of record, that I will not be charged with malfeasance, misfeasance of office, or giving public money to a private enterprise. Thank you for your time. Anybody want to see any of these, read them? There they are.
Can we make copies of that, of all your documents?
Yeah.
Wonderful.
That would be excellent. Thank you very much for providing that.
Good job, Andy. Good job, Annie.
We have awaited documentation. The faintest ink is better than the fondest memory. You live it.
And you live it.
And you live it.
Well, excuse me, and also the people of the City Council, and Mayor, and people that are here, most of you don't know me, that I've been here in this city since nineteen fifty-four. I've had property here, but I was still in the Navy, off and on, too. I was always at the Vator Tavern during the weekends, talking to the old boys, not the kids on the, new kids on the street. They're all gone. They've all passed away on me. But I listened to them. I worked for the people, worked for the old men, because they was using shovels in those days, and I was able to use a shovel. I know where almost every, ever storm drain is today, almost where all the old water and sewer lines was. I know where all the old clay tile is today. I also know where some of it was dug up. And they talk about the Little Crane. I will go a little bit further, I'd like to start with you. I stood there last year and watched Burlington Northern with their excavator pulling out the storm drain, which was clay tile, where they was putting the new arms down. And they wonder why the Little Crane is flooding. They won't listen to this old man on the block. He don't know anything. I'm sorry, I disagree with the people that say that. I know why the Little Crane don't have water, because at the end where the pipe went in the little, the old aqua, the last two years, there's been nothing going out that pipe. Thank you.
Right. Very good. I hope that gives some additional information and that you can assemble and use as you deliberate on the wisest use of those surplus budget funds. And hopefully, we'll be able to distill through the documentation that Mr. Wilson got, and we can make the wise decision with regard to that particular issue, whether we assist or not, based on the legal documentation. So now to revisit the agenda items specifically, council discussion of budget surplus allocations. I think you've heard two or three potential ways to allocate that fundage. I'm sure that hopefully, council members have come up with other innovative brainstorming ideas or suggestions.
Can I restate one thing? I think Kevin, if I understand correctly, Kevin's suggestion is to take that thirty-five nine, thirty-five point nine thousand, and put twelve thousand of it towards the planning and developing line item and for Rob White's contract, and then to set the other twenty-three point nine thousand aside for grant, grant matching funds and things like that. And which grants and whatnot would be decided as we proceed with these grant options, and then it would come back to council to make the decision whether we're going to use the funds that way. But I think that's the first option we have, and it can be approved that way, but if somebody wants to do something. I just wanted to make sure that we understood how that money has to be stated in some kind of motion tonight, if we can do that.
Thank you. I will say. I agree with you. Okay, so we've got a consensus from one council member. I don't know that a motion is necessary.
Oh, yeah, it is. This is allocating funds. They have to make a motion, and when they make a motion, where to send that money, then we will create an ordinance, a budget amendment, that will amend the budget to include where this money is going.
They want me to state my- One problem I've got with that concept is that we're still unsure as to a specific amount that Rob White might propose. But, so if you submit a motion for a formal amount-
What do you mean?
He said from ten to twelve.
Right.
But I don't know that that's a number that we want to hang our hat on.
Can we, can we word the motion that the excess fund balance that we have, if we can take the amount left over after Rob White's contract is determined-
Maybe not to exceed twelve thousand?
Right. Then the balance could be used for, set aside for street improvement and grant funding.
Let me clarify. The contract with Rob White is a service agreement contract, which means it's not set for a specific project, scope of work, and a specific amount. It's not going to be set up like that. It's going to be ongoing, and he won't know until he gets parlayed through what some of the other things are. He just gave us a ballpark estimate. That's why if the city sets a limit and says he can do the work that we need him to do up to this point, and when he reaches this point, if for some reason he reaches that point before the end of the year, he would have to come back to council and ask for more allocation, or council can say, no, it's got to wait till next year's budget before we do more.
Well, that's why we set aside the higher side of what his proposal was, instead of taking the cheap one, go for his high end, and then take that balance for what we want. We've got to have something set down for what we can do for streets and grants and whatever, so we have to have something. Or we can just say, take twenty-two thousand dollars and set it aside for street improvements and grant funding. And the difference of a thousand dollars will stay in the fund as excess balance until the final contract's determined. That gives us a little fudging.
Okay. So it sounds like in concept, we're getting some support from the council.
So then we have to word this, right? Now we have to word a motion, huh?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would encourage you to set, secure number for the planning department-
Right.
And then give the extra as opposed to the other.
As far as a motion goes, then we take the funding monies that we have, the excess funding, which is thirty-five thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-six cents, and we set aside twelve thousand dollars for the planning and community development services contract. That would leave us a balance of twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars for street improvement or grant fund matching. Take twenty-two thousand dollars of that money and set it aside for grant balancing, grant funding, and street improvements. That would leave us a balance of one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars to take care of any excess fundings or any overruns, so the city would not run short.
Okay. I think I captured that. Do you perhaps-
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. I have to restate the motion.
Good luck.
Yeah. You got a motion submitted by Mr. Flynn to take the excess budget funding, set aside twelve thousand dollars for the planning purposes. The remaining twenty-three thousand nine hundred and fifty would be allocated for, wait, part of the remaining, for street improvement or grant matching funds, a project for council consideration, leaving one thousand nine hundred and fifty-eight for extraordinary things that might occur. Did I get that?
Yep.
Okay. So that's the motion. Do we have a second for that motion?
I agree.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Now's a chance again for the council to provide concerns, questions relating to that motion. Last chance. Good noting. Okay. Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I applaud. I'm eager to applaud. Tell the cake and ice cream. Wow, that's a big, now quickly, council to select the date for the marijuana workshop. You recall that we were going to provide to you some possible dates. I think we picked out three, and hopefully you've been made aware of those three options. The council has the privilege and opportunity to pick a date.
They have not been made aware of any dates because-
Oh, dear.
Well, because we didn't know if they wanted to have a workshop on the same day as the council meeting, and do it like the hour before, or whatever, like we've done in the past, or if you want to set aside a separate day.
I would rather have it attached to the council meeting.
So would I.
Yeah, I really would.
Well, then, we discussed that this morning.
How do you feel about it, Joe?
I picked three, but, okay, that makes sense. You'd like to engage in that.
It's all the same, it's just time.
Yeah, I know, but it's easier, it's one less trip here, another mileage from my house just going there.
I know, it's all the way.
It's all downhill, it's already going home, it's stuck.
So then, the three next, I would assume that April twenty-fourth is our next meeting, but that would be too soon to, for everyone to be ready and prepared and publicized and everything.
We'd want to advertise it.
Right, so the next three meeting dates we have after that are May eighth, May twenty-second, and June twelfth. So those are the next upcoming dates.
May eighth, how does that sound, everybody?
May eighth works for me.
What day of the week is it? Thursday?
Their council meeting, so they would be starting at like five-thirty, five or five-thirty, and then-
I just assume do that.
For five-thirty.
Are you okay with that, Mr. Penney?
Yes.
May eighth. Okay. Are you okay with May eighth? I believe so. Are you okay with May eighth? And I see a consensus across the board. We did have an observation from the bank regarding that topic. Would the council care to hear it?
Sure, go ahead.
Here, we've got two people.
Mr. Wilson is prepared, and he takes that you can pick.
You take it.
Communication, so that's wonderful. Earlier the better would be wonderful for-
That's the earliest we can do it.
Okay.
Not the earlier, the date-wise, I'm saying, further hours-wise, because you're going to have a lot of questions and people there that you're going to have to allot three minutes or six minutes, whatever, the earliest you can give them more time, it'd be much nicer for the public to be able to ask questions.
All right. That's going to be, that's going to be equal for him for Milton's side and for the residents of Vator.
It would work, yeah. Another comment?
Important distance is, and I know it's an inconvenience for the council, and I respect and I appreciate the time we spend, but because of what's at stake, couldn't we have a delay there, because a lot of us country, the popular belief, work in Vator? And that has been a problem, because when you have it at five o'clock on a workday, a whole lot of people can't be here.
It's going to go from five-thirty to six-thirty.
Five-thirty?
Well, that's better than five. I wouldn't, I mean, one time even having a different dates or having it later, because it is cutting out a lot of voices, because they can't be here. I have a little flexibility with my job. A lot of people don't.
There's a lot of people who get up at four o'clock in the morning, too.
Yes, I appreciate that.
And so if we run it, if we run it later, then we're getting out of the council meetings at nine-thirty, ten o'clock, and they're usually in bed at nine o'clock, eight o'clock.
It should be.
That's the truth.
I go to four-thirty, I thought it was cute the way you said that. The other option, you need to have it on a-
I'm up every day at four o'clock, so.
I take five-thirty or six o'clock, and six-thirty is the latest, somewhere in that period of time, because if they really want to come here, they get off work, say, four, four-thirty, and five o'clock, then they can go home and eat. I mean, some of them are working hard, and you've got to give them a break, too. But both ways.
Okay.
I like, I like the five-thirty.
Given the lateness of hour, and I need to moderate the timing of such things, it seems to me that five-thirty represents about as good as you're going to get, that would be the third or fourth workshop we've had on that topic.
That's right. It's not the first.
We'll stick with five-thirty?
Yes.
And hope that it'll work out for those. And thank you for your verbal considerations. All right, with that, then we pick the date and the time. Let's move to item six, update on shoreline master plan process. I'm not sure that any members of council are aware, that we have at the Community Action Committee, I think that's what it's called, is a camp, committee is what I refer to it as, and they involve certain citizens or staff at committee. They had a meeting with John Hinton, which is with Gray and Osborne Engineering Company. He's been utilizing grant funds to cover the cities' required involvement in shoreline management, a project which every city has to do that has shoreline by state law. And they met last week, Monday, this week. And I was not able to attend that meeting, but I know that there are, at least one person here was present at that meeting. And what they're trying to do is do, in the thirty-second nutshell, is that grant money is supposed to analyze and evaluate what's being, what impacts are happening on that community's shoreline. We have the old aqua, that is our shoreline, that creek. And they've raised the border of that from a hundred feet to two hundred feet, and they try to, through these studies, ensure that there not be, there be zero loss of environmental impact on that shoreline. So hopefully, what will result will be a product that will enable the city to accomplish zero negative impact on that for the generations to come. So if there's a negative impact in one spot, the report will show how to ameliorate that negative impact in another location to maintain the zero loss. Does that make sense at all?
Yep.
So there's going to be a public hearing in May, I believe it's May eighteenth?
No, there's, no, the public hearings have not been set yet. There's going to be another-
But there's going to be one.
... CAC meeting coming up in, I don't have the date written down.
I had the-
In May, and then there will be a couple, we'll need, I think, two public hearings, the end of May and into June, and we're hoping to have it all finished. We're supposed to, the funding runs out at the end of June, so we've got to have it done by then.
Yes.
So that's, that's what we're shooting for. So you'll be hearing more about that in weeks to come.
Yeah, thank you. Somehow it got to eighteenth, but anyway, it's being handled, and you'll be hearing more about it, and so my bottom-line assessment is, life is good in that period. We're complying with the state law. Any questions or comments from the council? Feel free to contact Jill or myself, or even John Hinton, if the council members would like to know more about that some day. Item number six, this is a pretty provocative item. Ordinance two thousand fourteen dash zero three was what we discussed in our last council meeting. You'll recall that, I think it was essentially approved, contingent upon the insertion of the findings of SACT from the council's commentary and the mayor's input.
Right.
And hopefully, you've seen what was inserted in that, and that's, I don't know that we need to actually approve it.
We just need a motion reaffirming that the wording that was inserted as their comment is acceptable.
Carol Morris reviewed it, and she has found it good, our city turns. And so I guess we will need to have a council motion to again approve that ordinance. We'll await council action on that.
Well, I'm not afraid to speak up. I think we ought to, I'll put a motion forward that we approve this as written. Because it's, it just, all it does is repeat what we all said.
It does.
And the ordinance and everything, none of that has changed. It's just, just a statement of fact, we're written down, that's it.
I think you need to read the ordinance, though, it's kind of complicated.
The title.
Oh, just the title, okay.
No, because it's not, no, because it's already been approved by title. He's just affirming that the inserted contingency that was placed in the last, it wouldn't hurt to read it, I guess, but-
Yeah, we're not rewriting the title.
No, we're not rewriting the ordinance, we're just asserting-
I've always said that, in the interest of time, you just approve the motion by reading the number.
Approve the insertion.
Just read the number?
Yeah.
Ordinance number two thousand, two zero one four dash zero three.
Okay. The motion has been submitted, council to affirm, the motion is noted, I mean, the ordinance is noted. Seconded by Mr. Penney. Is there any, sorry, feedback, council? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Item number one, under new business, should be quick. Council to consider park rental fees for, you have to be cruisers, for their car show, which- is on the weekend of the May Day festivities. I think that the council.
July ninth.
Okay, June seventh, thank you. So, ladies and council authorized me in our last council meeting to meet with representatives, I met with Steve Groh, chairman of the park board, and president of that organization, and asked me to negotiate with them what might be considered a fair rental fee, so in my discussion with them, we concluded that they paid fifty dollars last year. They felt comfortable paying that amount. I felt comfortable because we had a precedent for it, and so I've, I would submit to the council for your official approval, allowing them to rent McMurphy Park for a fifty-dollar fee.
Yes.
Are we happy with that?
Yes.
Fifty dollars for the county cruisers for their car show.
I think that'd be fair enough. Fifty-dollar fee might just help us to have our own public works guy a little bit to go down there, because I know if we want to understand, they're having a hard time. And there's no use trying to take and push. We, like I said earlier in the evening, we need to do everything we can to get people to come into town.
I think that's a nice.
Maybe fifty dollars is too much. We don't have anything down there, we don't have no electricity, they got to get their own generators, we don't have no bathrooms, all we've got is a couple of fortifies. It's really a nice looking place down there, but we, you can't nail the people down for something you don't have yourself.
That was actually why, it was a surprise, because we didn't have the, the power or water down there.
They used to help quite a bit.
Really?
I think that's lying fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, it might be too much.
They, they felt it was okay.
That's the way I feel about it. I want, I want to see, I want to see the city grow like it used to be. Period.
Well, so I would await, council.
Sorry, I'll hear back.
It's my bad. So the, I heard fifty dollars was what was negotiated, I suggested it could be less, but why don't we start with the fifty unless there's a change to that, and we'd start from right to left and get your feedback.
Yes.
If they've agreed to it already, then, yes.
Okay, two yeses, lower, but.
Yes.
Yes, yes, so four for fifty. I think that would, we'll just have to go with it, and I think they're comfortable with that. Steve, you were there, you feel it's okay, so.
Being that last year, they paid their fifty dollars, got rid of that, didn't use the parks.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
Well.
Guess that was what it was.
Okay, well, we won't address that in this court, then. I will proceed with that. The last item is Jeff Cummins' garbage rate increase. I'm going to turn the time over to Jill to explain the negotiations that have taken place at the last minute, that is, all this has been, it has to be dealt with, and so, Jill, why don't you go ahead and explain what's involved with that?
This is due, this change is requested by Jeff Cummins. He informed us that the county has raised the, what they call tipping rate for dumping at the county dump, and it's been raised eight dollars per ton, and he sent us the documentation. I've checked with the county, that, that said yes, that that is the case. And so Mr. Cummins has requested that we increase the rates in order to cover that additional fee. It appears that it's four percent of his cost, and so that's about fifty cents per month in the base rate. Everything would stay the same, except you, you can see in the draft that we gave you, the only thing that's changed is the amount has gone approximately fifty cents for the base rate, and then also any of the other fees went up four percent as well. This has, we have to notify the public with at least forty days, forty-five days, so this would not be able to take effect until June first, if it was passed tonight and we were able to get it published by the next town prior. So that's really all that's, that's happening here. That's the only change is just the rate.
Yeah, he needs to, this expeditiously.
It comes out to be about a hundred and fifty dollars a month, extra cost for him, and so dispersing it throughout is fifty cents per month. So it'll be about a dollar more on everybody's bill.
I would make a motion that we approve his contract.
It's still considerably less than.
Oh, yeah.
We have to approve the, we have to approve the ordinance amendment, it's really have to, so then you have to read.
Would you mind reading that, Mr. Wilson? Mr. Wilson's got a motion for the council.
Oh.
You got it. Better than Jeff.
I make a motion that we adopt ordinance number twenty-fourteen dash oh four, an ordinance of the City of Vader, Washington, amending ordinance twenty-ten dash oh one, section four, item B, fees and charges for the collection and disposal of solid waste in the City of Vader, Washington, by increasing all fees and charges for residential and churches, commercial and schools, and repealing all prior ordinances in conflict, here with and establish an effective date there hereof.
Yes, this was prepared by Carol Morris, and she has made the modifications in the first paragraph. You will note the changes.
It was prepared by me, but it was approved by Carol Morris.
Approved, right, yeah. Okay, with that, you've heard the motion submitted by Mr. Wilson, as read. Do we have a second for that?
I'd like to second that.
Seconded by Mr. Wilson. Is there any council commentary at this point?
Mr. Johnson, excellent job. As to Mr. Cummins, an excellent job.
He does, I, I would concur with that. Okay, then, hearing no additional comments from the council, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. See that we've covered a lot of ground in tonight's meeting, and so, Mr. Action? So I amend the council for your advice, action. Nobody can say that you're not doing anything with all that positive.
Hey, nobody can leave until we have the barricades.
That's the order we need.
Burn it. We used to be able to burn around here, and then they.
We can't do it anymore.
And now we can't burn. I have four acres of trees that need pruned, and what do I do with it all? Now we don't have a place to chip it, we don't have a place to burn it, that's why I said, I am going to bring that up.
I'm just going to let my tree tree.
Go do it right away. I just.
I'm just telling you, that's when the dump, we, we like to keep it open and just let the trees move as we want.
I was down there yesterday loading, unloading stuff, and I saw the pile of garbage, I couldn't believe it.
The pile of garbage, we have like one bag of garbage, we have to add that people bring up.
What am I, I don't know what I'm going to do. We were, my wife and I were talking, what am I going to do with all the fruit?